To order at four thirty-three and ask the clerk to take the roll, please.
Here's Councilmember Newton, Councilmember Hannah, Councilmember Alaman.
Here.
Mayor Protem Bash, Mayor Grumeyer, all present, thank you.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, we're here today for a workshop, I'm gonna go ahead and call upon our senior planner for introductions.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council, we have here today staff from the Department of Toxic Substances Control. So Mohsen and his team will be doing a brief presentation to give you guys the latest on the former Wiley Labs site.
Good afternoon, everyone, I would like to thank you, the City of Norco, for inviting DTSC project team for the former Wiley Lab. It's a great opportunity for us to be here. First, I would like to introduce my coworkers on this project. Myself, my name is Mohsen Behani, I'm a project manager. I've been with this project for like a year and a half. With me, I have Mr. Nicholas Taugh, our unit chief. Our technical staff, Mr. Paul Pongedi, a professional geologist from DTSC's Geological Services Branch. Dr. Ephraim Nevers, Staff Toxicologist from DTSC's Human and Ecological Risk Office. Dr. Faru Khamat, a professional engineer from DTSC's Engineering and Special Services Office. He will, did he join, I think he was supposed to join virtually. And we also have Mrs. Safa Durgam, a Principal Geologist from Ramble Project Consultant. A brief background about Wiley, Wiley Lab, as you know, it was operated as a defense aerospace and consumer product testing facility from nineteen fifty-seven to two thousand. It's a four hundred twenty-nine acre site. The upper, and it's divided to upper and lower basin. The upper basin received unrestricted regulatory closure from DTSC, which basically means that it can be used for any redevelopment purposes. But the lower basin, which is undergoing remediation, it has a recorded land use restriction, land use covenant. And it's basically suitable for commercial industrial use. With regard to investigation and remediation history, DTSC issued an order in two thousand three for Wiley Lab and Arrow Electronics. The major hazard, the major hazardous substances identified at the site are trichloro tylenine and nitrosodymetylamine, NDMA. Subsurface investigation began in nineteen ninety-five. Remedial investigation and feasibility study completed in two thousand eight. Interim remediation at the northwest site boundary started in two thousand eight. DTSC approved a final remedial action plan, plan RAP in two thousand thirteen. And also executed a land use covenant for the lower basin area in two thousand fourteen. The property is fenced to restrict public address, access, sorry. So groundwater flow direction in the eastern portion of the site is towards south, southwest, as you can see in the map. In the middle portion of the site, there is a topographic saddle near Area E, which basically divides groundwater to the north and south. And in the northwest area, groundwater flow direction is toward, is toward north, northwest, along the Golden West Lane. Westernly along the Third Street, and then south-southerly along the, I mean, along the south of the Buckboard Lane. This is the groundwater flow pattern is based on topography, but the operation of the remedy in the northwest area impacted groundwater flow direction. On-site remedial action status. Based on the evaluated investigation data, a site-specific cleanup goal for commercial use have been developed to, I mean, using site-specific data and conservative assumptions to keep people and ecological receptors safe. The established site cleanup, site cleanup goals for soil, soil gas, and groundwater were finalized and approved in the remedial action plan by DTSC in two thousand thirteen. Okay, so the site remedies are divided into five areas. Area one is Area FH Source. The remedy for this part of the, this part of the site is institute chemical oxidation. And the time period for completion is, estimated time period for completion is seventeen years. Number two is Area FH Distal Plume. The remedy is monitored, monitored natural attenuation, basically we are just monitoring in this area. And the estimated time, time period for this area is thirty years. Area three is Area E Plume. The remedy for this area is phytoremediation with the estimated timeframe of twenty-five years. Area four is a small area in the middle. The remedy for this area is institute thermal desorption with the, and this remedy was completed in two thousand sixteen. And Area five is onsite and also includes offsite areas in the northwest area. And the estimated timeframe for this area is fifteen to thirty years. As you can see, I'll start with the first area, Area one, Area FH Plume. As you can see, pre-remediation, the remediation in this area was started in two thousand fourteen. So this is the picture you can see from the last quarter of twenty thirteen, pre-remediation. And here you can see, after, I mean, nine, the impact of nine years remediation at this area. What we observed is TCE concentration dropped significantly in most of the monitoring wells. We divided this area to three sub-areas, Subarea F2, F3, and F4. For Subarea F2, fifteen of sixteen monitoring wells are showing TCE concentrations below cleanup goal. In Area F3, all monitoring wells are showing TCE concentrations below cleanup goal. And in Area F2, eleven of twelve monitoring wells are showing TCE concentrations below cleanup goal. And as you can see, the TCE contours are also shrinking when you compare it to what it was before the starting remedy. For Area FH Distal Plume, as I said, monitored natural attenuation is the selected remedy for this area. Continuous monitoring of TCE concentrations in this area showed that all monitoring wells, except monitoring well MW thirty-eight B, are showing TCE concentrations below cleanup goal for the site. And in monitoring well thirty-eight B, what we observed is decreasing trend, as you can see here in this graph. A decreasing trend started since two thousand eighteen. So at this time, there is no additional action plan for this area, and we keep monitoring the progress of MNA. Area E Plume, the number three on that map, the selected remedy was phytoremediation due to low permeability and the need to preserve natural environment near the F M R L Street. What we can say with this area is we, we are observing that tree roots are reaching groundwater and are updating, uptaking and reducing chemicals of concern in groundwater. VOC concentrations are below drinking water standards at down gradient site boundary. And also VOC concentrations are declining in most of the monitoring wells. But we are also observing an increasing trend in a couple of wells that we are, I mean, basically discussing that with project consultant. DTSC recently approved the first five-year review report for this area. Due to the nature of this remedy, which is kind of slow, we are expecting to see more progress in the coming years. And so that's the reason that we keep watching for it. And we're hoping that the next five-year review, which will be submitted in two thousand twenty-seven, we would be in a better position to evaluate the effectiveness of this remedy and basically decide, in the meantime, also decide on any enhancement that is needed for this area to finally reach the remedial goals within the timeframe proposed. For MW thirty-three area, as I said, institute thermal desorption was the selected remedy to treat the source area in groundwater. This technology basically uses excessive heat to vaporize and mobilize contamination. And then that contamination is eventually extracted by other technologies like soil vapor extraction. The heating conducted between April and September of two thousand sixteen, followed by multiple rounds of monitoring, soil gas and groundwater monitoring. What was observed was thermal treatment was, removed TCE from soil gas and groundwater. Currently, DTSC is reviewing the first, the first five-year review report for this area and is, and is basically evaluating the effectiveness of remedy. For the offsite conditions. Hydraulic, as I mentioned, remedy in this area began in two thousand eight as an interim plan. Hydraulic containment system was the selected remedy, and it was constructed in two thousand eight. And it was finally defined as a remedy for this area in the RAP document approved by DTSC in two thousand thirteen. For this remedy, fifteen extraction wells and performance monitoring well network were constructed. So far, approximately twenty-three hundred pounds of VOCs were removed from this area. In the offsite area, this remedy was coupled with a ZVI or zero valent iron permeable reactive barrier, PRB, which was constructed at the intersection of Third, Third Street and Hillside Avenue. The ZVI barrier was constructed in twenty eighteen and completed in twenty nineteen to address the TCE plume beyond Golden West Line. And the results so far showed that it was efficient in removing VOCs and reducing down gradient mass transport of contamination. As I mentioned earlier, the groundwater at the site is following topography. But the operation of HCS at the site reverse groundwater flow direction at the vicinity of the site, this area. And basically, this shows that it has significantly reduced offsite migration of contaminants. In this, in this slide, you can see two pictures, this one was taken first quarter two thousand eight, this one is the second quarter of two thousand twenty-three. As you can see here in the figure, all the shallow groundwater wells are dry. HCS, and we can say HCS lowered the, lowered the water table and reduced VOC mass leaving the site. And in this figure, these are deeper wells, as you can see, and if you compare it with this, this contour, contour of contaminants at the first quarter two thousand eight, if you compare it with this one, you would see that TCE concentrations are declining in most of the wells and contaminant contours are shrinking. As I mentioned, a five hundred twenty-five foot long, ninety foot deep permeable wall, permeable wall was constructed in two thousand nineteen. This red line is showing the ZVI PRB wall. This, this wall is located at the intersection of Hillside and Third Street in the area that historically had higher TCE concentrations. What we observed was ZVI degrade TCE as it migrates through the permeable wall. And TCE concentrations are decreasing down, down gradient, especially in the immediate vicinity of the ZVI PRB. Here is the map of most recent offsite groundwater sampling. I believe it was discussed in the last City Council briefing that five new deeper wells are installed adjacent to the existing shallow wells. And these are the shallow wells, these are the wells that were existing, these two wells. And then five new wells were installed adjacent to them. Based on the results of sampling from those, in those wells that were installed in two thousand twenty-one, DTSC requested Ramble to extend its work by advancing fourteen additional borings at the Norco High School, Second Street, Corona Avenue, and Norco Elementary School for collection of shallow and deeper grab groundwater samples. So these blue dots in the map, you may not be able to see them because, I mean, we have to, I mean, make it smaller to be presentable. But all these blue dots are the ones that were collected last summer. There are some orangish color dust that were, are the samples that were collected last December. And these pinkish ones, these two locations were sampled this summer. The results confirm, the results of all these samplings confirm that VOC plume is generally narrow and doesn't extend to Norco Elementary School. But we need to discuss the scope for additional delineation and monitoring because we still observe some TCE concentrations from this location. And as I said, next steps are being discussed based on the latest data. With regard to soil gas in the offsite area, since the major issue in the offsite area is offgassing TCE from groundwater, the focus of remediation in the offsite area is groundwater. And as TCE concentrations have declined in groundwater, we observed that TCE concentrations also have declined in soil gas. In the offsite area, we have over eighty soil gas probes. And the result of monitoring in this soil gap, in soil gas probe is showing that an area impacted, the area impacted by, by TCE, this is TCE plume, is relatively small, just this area here and a small area here. And basically, TCE concentrations in all soil gas probes are declining or stable. To address any potential for vapor intrusion to the properties that are located here, Ramble and DTSC started offering Sabaslab depressurization systems to homeowners in this area to make sure that it provides a level of protection against VI. Another request from last City Council meeting, based on that request, DTSC asked Ramble to install a soil gas probe at Norco High School near Classroom Building AG2. This VW forty-five is newly installed probe. And also collect an eight-hours crawl space sample from beneath Building R thirteen, which is located here. And the results for both of them indicated that TCE was not detected. As I mentioned, a Sabaslab depressurization system was offered as a method to mitigate potential for vapor intrusion in the neighborhood. Forty-two residences so far have been offered SSD to address the VI issue, the potential for VI issue. The blue ones are the ones that accepted the offer. Currently, twenty-four SSDs are in place and operating. And these pink color ones are the ones either declined the offer or haven't responded to the offer. And there are two homes that previously had SSD, but this year they requested the system be removed from their homes. So these two homes, they don't have SSD any longer. Operation and maintenance is ongoing annually to confirm that SSD systems are operating as designed. In addition to regular operation and maintenance, DTSC requested Ramble to collect indoor air samples from selected residences to further confirm that SSDs are addressing the potential for vapor intrusion. The work plan for indoor air sampling was approved in October twenty-two, and ten residences were selected for indoor air quality sampling. Out of ten, only six properties granted access. And those are the ones that are identified with this circular line. The results indicated that five, that at five residences, TCE results are below a screening level of one microgram per cubic meter. And in only one resident, TCE results were above a screening level. Possible indoor air source was identified in this residence, this blue one, this, sorry, this red one here. And DTSC is currently evaluating the data provided by consultant. In conclusion, we can say that TCE in groundwater is the source of TCE in soil gas. Treatment of groundwater via multiple technologies is making progress toward remedial goals. TCE source is contained and reduced on-site. The SSD systems that were installed at multiple homes are, are working to address the VI issue. Both groundwater and soil gas monitorings are ongoing. On-site and off-site groundwater remediation is ongoing. And DTSC is reviewing the progress regularly through semi-annual performance monitoring reports and also through five-year review reports. For the next one, two, three years, we have a list of scheduled activities. We will continue to monitor, yearly monitoring the operation and maintenance of SSD systems. The semi-annual remedial performance monitoring report, National Pollutant Discharge and Elimination System, and Waste Discharge Requirements reporting are also monitored as required. We continue to receive quarterly progress report, and we will continue to, the operation and maintenance. and maintenance and data analysis will be continued for all ongoing remediation on and offsite. And Ramble should submit the second five-year review for the on- and offsite hydraulic containment system in late 2024 and area FH source in early 2026. And with that, we are at the, I'm at the conclusion of the presentation. Thank you very much for your time. I hope you find it useful, and we are ready to take any questions.
All right. Thank you very much for your presentation. Berwin, do you have any questions? Greg, do you have any questions?
Good afternoon. I was just curious, process or how you reverse the flow of the groundwater that you had mentioned?
I think the portion that you're referring to is the hydraulic containment system that's operating in the vicinity of the property line. And they use a series of extraction wells to basically lower the groundwater and extract groundwater from those points, which creates a reversal of the gradient towards those pumping wells, those extraction wells.
And that process, what determines like, how you, how much you lower it? Are you using any factors there at all?
Well, it's based on the monitoring well network. I think what most of us refer to relates to the monitoring well network and looking at the groundwater surface elevation in extraction wells and the wells closest to the extraction wells versus the ones that are further away from the extraction wells.
That was one of the questions that I have. I think it's slide 15. Can, is it possible to, to just kind of show where the water's getting, I was looking at all the arrows, and that was my question as well. So where, where is it being reversed on this diagram?
Okay, this is, let's see, two figures. The one to the left is showing the first quarter of 2008, which I'm assuming that's prior to the installation and operation of the hydraulic containment system. And then the one to the right is showing the second quarter of 2023, which is recent data. And you see the arrow that's drawn there. I mean, the, again, that's kind of a generalization, but if you, if you were to zoom in on that figure, closest to the property line, you would see the groundwater surface elevation there is lower than some of the groundwater surface elevations measured further out to the northwest. So that's the basis for that, the arrow.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for answering my question.
Catherine, do you have questions? I did have a couple. I was jotting them down. There's a lot of acronyms, so I was trying to keep track of them all. On slide 11, you were talking about the phyto remediation. So as the plant material is uptaking these toxins, what happens if an animal or wildlife eats those, that plant material? Is there an effect that it would have? Is it safe for them to eat?
My understanding, how the system's working, there are trees that are planted, and so it gets taken up into the vascular system of the tree, goes up to the leaves and falls out, so it doesn't concentrate inside the tree, it doesn't build up in there. So I imagine that the risk assess, that the feasibility study would have looked at that, they would have considered whether it would have been an issue because it was an ecological risk assessment component of it. So I'm guessing that whatever levels would be in those would be too low to be a concern to the animals, and that may eat the leaves on the trees.
Okay. Thank you. Let me see, I think I have a couple more.
If I can add, the contaminant also transforms through phyto remediation. So the TCE is transformed to innocuous products.
So it's less toxic because it's being sort of processed by the plant?
Yeah, because it's a combination of phyto remediation and there's endophytes, basically fungi that are added to the soil. So it's a combined process that is supposed to transform TCE into something innocuous.
Okay, thank you. On slide 16, talking about how the water table was lowered, some of the shallow wells are now dry. And I, you may have talked about this later on when you talked about how you dug deeper wells, but that was one of my questions, was just if the wells dry up, when we get more rain, do we see that those wells go back up? Are they then tested again, or is that effect really negligible? And is the solution just to kind of do a deeper well just to make sure that there are still less toxins that are being measured?
Yeah, I think there were a number of wells installed previously because the hydraulic containment system has deep watered the area right there inside boundary. Deeper wells were installed to monitor the water. So this is the shallow zone groundwater. I think the reason for this slide, showing this slide is to show the number of dry wells in the area, but most all of those have been replaced with deeper wells in the same locations or below. That's another slide.
Okay, perfect.
Sorry, to finish off, there's a question. Those dry wells remain in there, and they continue to check for water over surface C and B, so water over surface C.
Okay, perfect. And then on slide 19, we're talking about some of the additional wells that went in and some of those that were done around the areas that the council had concern with, around Norco High School, Second Street, Norco L. How, so, so on the last point, it says next steps is being discussed based on the latest data, but it said in 2021, these wells were installed. So my question is, how long does it take to get the data? And how long does it take to discuss what to do? Because that seems like a significant amount of time.
Yeah, unfortunately, it is kind of a long-term process. It takes a long time to get the site access. There's quite a bit of scoping of the locations. Oftentimes, we go out with a set of locations that are not accepted by the property owners, so we have to go back and identify new locations. So this has been a phased approach. You know, as indicated by the slide, there were five deeper wells that were installed in 2021, and that was in response to a couple of deeper locations where we saw, you know, some trends going up. So, you know, we and Ramble had worked to identify these additional locations for well installations. And since then, there's been 14 borings. These are temporary borings. Some of them were installed in areas where access was not granted for a permanent well, and they collected a temporary, I'm sorry, a, two groundwater samples from a temporarily installed well. And based on that data, we have intentions to go back and install permanent wells, you know, to delineate the plume. But, you know, the next step's being discussed, we just saw this, some of the most recent data were collected over the summer, and we just saw the data reported out to us in the last month. So, you know, we're in the process of reviewing that, and we will be discussing it with Arrow and their consultants and figuring out the next steps.
Okay, so looking at these diagrams, it also said the second to last bullet, that the results generally are, that the plume is generally narrow and does not extend to Norco L. And so when I look at that, I'm looking at the map to see where that is. To me, I see that there is the plume, so that's why maybe I'm not reading this diagram correctly, around Norco High School.
Yes, that's correct. And there's, you know, two figures here. One on the left is indicating shallow groundwater, which is the first encountered groundwater. And the one to the right is indicating deeper groundwater, which occurs, I think this was more around 60 to 70 feet in many of these locations, but the locations were somewhat So there's a interface between the alluvial material, the sandier soil, and the bedrock beneath it. So the two, the shallow corresponds to first groundwater, which would be the one of highest concern to, you know, receptor on the surface. And then the second figure corresponds to deeper groundwater, which was roughly, but not always, at the occurrence of the alluvium and the bedrock beneath it.
And what do the colors mean here?
You know, those are ISO concentration contours, and, you know, to be honest, I cannot make that out. My eyes are not that good either, so I know we have, we have the report. I believe the, my gosh, I don't want to spend-
Are any of them at levels to be concerned about? Because I read that we don't, like, it doesn't extend to Norco L, but then it didn't include the other sites. So that made me think, well, is that because they are an area of concern? And then it said next steps is being discussed based on the data. Does that mean there needs to be, needs to be next steps? Or are these levels all within safe limits?
Well, you know, when, when you get into offsite groundwater, the concentrations that we compare to are the MCL, maximum contaminant level for drinking water, which for TCE is five PBB, I'm sorry. So what we do is compare to that number, and that would dictate delineation, reaching the extent of the plume that corresponds to the drinking water MCL. Now, you know, when, when you get into shallower groundwater, you know, there is some concern, there can be some concern about vapor intrusion. So that's another item that we're evaluating. So, but these, these are not the same levels. These are, I mean, roughly, I think you're looking at, once you get south of the high school, you're looking at 10 to 100, I think that's sort of a range of concentration.
Of parts per billion? PBB is that?
Micrograms per liter.
Which is the same as parts per billion, by the way, micrograms per liter.
Thank you. And is the plume of concern? Because I see that, that in your further slides, that we monitored a building, right? We did an eight-hour monitoring in a crawl space, and we did a soil gas probe, and we didn't find any soil vapors. But when I look at this diagram, and I read, and I hear, oh, well, Norco L is safe, in quotes, you know, just to generalize, but next steps are being discussed, and I look at these plumes, it looks to me like maybe these are areas of concern. So, but it doesn't say that explicitly, so I'm trying to get explicit answers.
So the amount that's going to be in vapor depends on groundwater, but it's more complicated. We generally like to, instead of making decisions for what's going to be vapor based on groundwater, based on measuring vapor. And so, oh, yes, I'm sorry. So the areas that are, we've identified issues in vapor are further to the north, close to the Third Street. But you can see where the line is purple, that's kind of like where the highest groundwater is, up in that area. And it extends on to the high school, and it kind of drove some of our more interest in getting some, that classroom, getting a crawl space under, because that's close to some of the higher levels that we've seen in groundwater. And we had never sampled that classroom before. We looked at the records, and it may not have been there back when we did the indoor air investigations back in the day in the high school. So that's why we did that. We put another vapor probe next to those buildings in the AG area, because it's getting closer to that area, so that's why we focused on that. Looking at the contour in relation to the Norco Elementary School, I think the light blue line is like where it goes to non-detect. So I think the plume is kind of within the lightest, the light blue line. And so anything outside of that wouldn't be a concern, because the vapor would probably be above that. So, but when you're in that area, that's where we would start focusing more on, you know, the vapor issues, and we would concentrate on the areas where the concentrations are highest. We may get more data in vapor in additional areas. We haven't talked everything out yet, so.
Okay, and then-
Does that make sense?
Yes. And the vapor probe is still at Norco High?
Uh, that additional probe is still there.
And how many are there currently?
On the high school in total? That I'm not sure about. There are quite a few. I think, yeah, I don't, this figure doesn't show it. I don't, I don't know if we have one that shows all of those, all the vapor probes on the high school. Yeah, I couldn't tell you, because the high school's a pretty large area. Oh, there you go. Every one of those marked on the, if you look at the map of the high school campus, you can see them. Every single one of those is a vapor probe.
Okay.
Right, so there are two main monitoring probes that are just north of the school buildings, and those have, you know, kind of been our main sentinel probes for being concerned about the occupied, main occupied buildings and the classrooms. And they've remained really low since they were put in. So that's, that's been good. And again, we added that new one up in the corner. It says VW45, and that's next to the, one of the, one of the classroom buildings in the AG area. We had had other probes in that area, but none on that side of the building. After the prior city council meeting, and people, we were asked a lot of questions, and so we went back and looked, and we said, well, why didn't we ever put one there? We had them on the other side, but we want to be closer to where the plume is. And so we asked them to install an additional probe on that side of the classroom buildings in the AG area.
Okay, thank you. And how often does the data, is the data pulled or the monitoring data come in and looked at? Is it every six months, or?
It's semi-annually, semi-annually, yes.
Okay, thank you. I just have a couple more questions. On the vapor intrusion for the houses, so this was something that I think a while ago, when Councilmember Bash and I were on a call, for the houses, because there are a number of homeowners who haven't responded. Is there a way that we can coordinate to make sure that people are aware and they're just choosing not to have this mitigation? I know that the letter gets sent out once a year. People may or may not be reading it. They might be reading it in, I don't know if they think it's junk mail, or just to make sure as a city we're doing our due diligence that our residents are informed and can make that choice.
Yeah, I mean, in addition to sending those letters in the mail, we also, last year, we also tried to call homeowners. Our public participation specialists tried that. And then I believe four additional homeowners declined at that time. And then we also, I mean, we tried calling them, we left a voicemail, and for some of them, we never, I mean, they never returned our call.
Okay. I appreciate that you tried to call them. Thank you. And then lastly, there's no other homes that we think should receive vapor intrusion? Or, sorry, the sub-slab depressurization system? These are the only homes that would need it?
As we said, we are looking on the data every six months, and if we see that there is any increasing trend in any vapor probe that would cause a risk to residents, that list would be updated, and new homeowners would be added to the list. But as of today, we only have those homes that were offered.
Okay, thank you. Kevin, questions?
Yeah, I just have a few. What does 2,300 pounds of VOCs look like? Is it water? Is it gunk? Is it, what does that mean? 2,300 pounds, ton, more than a ton? I'm not seeing anybody answer that.
I will ask our engineer to respond to this question.
Can you say it a little louder? I can't quite get the question.
What does 2,300 pounds of VOCs look like? What is, is it like a big ball of gunk? What is, is it like a big ball of gunk, or is it water, or?
Uh, I mean, it's a volatile compound. I mean, these, these compounds that you're, uh, seeing in the pictures and whatnot, these are solvents. Uh, so, yeah, it's a, uh, it is a low-boiling liquid, so it, you know, if you're talking about that much mass removed. It's usually removed on a, a carbon, uh, or, or something else where it's soaked on. But, yeah, it'll be, the, the number is estimated by basically a difference, like how much is coming in versus how much is leaving. And you estimate the total mass based on the amount removed. Does that answer your question, or not?
Get up with the shovel, or?
As a liquid or anything like that, because the concentrations are too low.
It's liquid. It's essentially liquid.
Got it. All right, I was just curious. Um, lowering the water table, did that have to do with you guys pulling stuff out of the ground? Or, or was it because of the-
It's based on groundwater extraction. So think of, think of the water table as like a surface. And if you stick a straw in it and suck on it, the, the, the surface sort of drops. And as you're, as you're pumping the water out, uh, you know, the, the surface sort of drops, and the water table sort of depresses. Uh, so it's, it's part of the containment system. Um, and that's why, there's a number of wells that are extracting groundwater that way, and hence, you know, the, the potential metric surface, which is the water table, drops such.
And then when you say that the, um, the plume is narrow, does that mean there's like, it's kind of like water, it's found a crevices or a pathway that it follows?
It's, yeah, it's narrow, because if you look at that, those pictures, uh, let's say you look at, uh, slide nineteen. So the pink area actually represents, and I think Paul can speak better to this, but the pink area is sort of the alluvium, which, which is where the water flows. The brown area is more the bedrock, which is sort of above, uh, the water level. So the, the water, I mean, the VOCs or the water-laden VOCs, VOC-laden water doesn't go into the bedrock as much. It flows through the alluvium, which is the, sort of the flow path for the groundwater.
I understand that.
I know there's a channelized, um, surface water feature that goes roughly in that same general direction, right? And, you know, going back before pre-development, I mean, it's possible that, you know, over the geologic time of the sediments being laid down, there is some preferential flow path in that direction, that general direction.
Okay. Um, what did you mean when you said that the, the, um, the Ag Two building was close to, how close? How, close to the plume? That's why you were, that's why you had so many things at Norco High School? I mean, what does that mean? Is it twenty feet? Is it fifty feet? Is it two hundred feet, or?
Well, I don't have the exact physical distance, but I think you can look at that figure, and you could see that, um, there's the, the purple area, obviously, the, the more violet area is the highest concentrations. But probably in an earlier sample, there's a vapor probe that's maybe that, yeah, I can't really read the name of it unfortunately. Um, but there was probably some concentration in there at, in one of the probes. Right now, the, the deeper ones are saturated. That means that you couldn't even get a vapor sample, because there's too much water in it. But maybe there was a concentration that was a little bit higher there. And so we wanted one between that point and the building. And you could see, there's that vapor point that's along that, that surface water flow path that Paul was talking about, like where there's a channel for the stormwater. And so, um, we wanted something on the other side of that storm channel, just to be sure that the, the vapor plume in this area didn't, doesn't, didn't extend under that building without us realizing it. There may have been another figure of this somewhere, I'm not sure. That may have given something better. I'm not positive. Uh, there, I mean, I think you could see where the, the new probe was put in next to the school building, so.
Right.
Uh, there, clearly, there's a vapor plume. But the vapor plume above our, our decision level, the screening level we were talking about, that's really kind of like, we wanted to make sure we had it delineated up until that portion of the building. And so probably we had other points around, but not, not between the, that Ag Two building and, and the next point over. So that's why we wanted to put something in there. There's definitely a vapor plume, and the vapor plume may extend, okay, it was non-detect over there, and it's non-detect at the next one. So we didn't know really where that stopped. So that's kind of why we put it there. But it's not like some kind of, it's not a very clear line. It kind of probably moves a little bit, and it probably goes up and down as the seasons and things change over time. And so, um, putting it there would allow us to better define that, a classroom where it's going to be occupied very frequently. Uh, you know, again, I'm not sure how often that particular one is. But that way we can be positive that the vapors aren't under that particular building, and the buildings next to it. That's kind of defining the limits of where the vapor is extending.
All right, and, um, so I just have three more questions. So what, in terms of, on the Wiley Lab site itself, um, development, I know that the east side is safe, but the west side, I mean, we've got some proposals coming at us. Is it safe for people? And what, what kind of remediation do they have to do to make sure it's safe?
I mean, for the, let me, I have one picture. So, this area, the eastern portion is safe-
Right.
For any redevelopment. This area, this bluish color, these are the areas that we have a land use covenant, which means the, the, their usage is restricted to commercial industrial.
Right.
And any redevelopment, and we have active remedies in this area. Any redevelopment should not disturb or interrupt the active remedy. So as of today, this, I believe the size of this area is thirty-two point three acre. For this, these areas, it is restricted. But for the other areas, as long as, I mean, restricted to commercial industrial, but for the other areas, as long as it doesn't, uh, disturb the remedies, we have no restriction.
But you get on top of the blue areas, you can put industrial development? And what will they have to do? Like Eastville have to run pipes up because of the cow manure, or something like that? I mean, I'm being serious. They literally have pipes for the methane. Is that what they do here for the vapor? Or if they do build on top of those, or can they not build on top of those?
I mean, if you mean building on top of those, I mean, like I said, it's very complicated, because the remedies are still ongoing. So, and then we don't want the, I mean, any activity to be disturbing to our, I mean, remedial work. And that's one of the terms that should be considered for any redevelopment activity. So, that's all I can say at this time.
All right, and then my last two questions. Um, I asked this in nineteen ninety-seven, when they promised me they'd have it clean enough that my child could eat the dirt. Um, is Norco High School safe, Second Street, Corona Avenue? Would you let your kids go to school there or live on those streets? And, uh, would you let them eat the dirt in those areas? Or be in the classrooms? It's actually a very serious question.
Yeah, I know. I, I, I wouldn't recommend dirt eating in general. But for being inside the classrooms, the classrooms are safe. We have, we have no evidence, other eyes, to suggest that there's any issues with the classrooms. The soil itself is not contaminated, remember, and off the property. It's the vapors that are the issue. So that's where all the focus is on reducing the source of those vapors, which is the groundwater, right? Because that's where it's coming from.
Right.
And, and cleaning that up. And once you clean that up, the vapor should be addressed. But in the meantime, the, those homes that are really over where the, the groundwater is the highest, and also where leading to vapors that have been shown to be a problem, that's why you have the mitigation systems that are in place. So, I mean, and that's why we went at, we went and, we looked, we identified the homes where, um, we had previously detected something in people's houses, or, um, that are still next to some of the highest concentrations in vapor, and we wanted to retest them. So that's why we went back and asked the indoor air to retest it in those individual homes that were there. And then a few other of the homes didn't have those issues, but they had, from historical data in indoor air, some anomalous results, which we thought was bad quality data, but we just thought, we'll check those houses again, just to make sure they're safe. So that's why we went back into those individual ones. Um, so my answer to you is, yes, I wouldn't have a problem with sending the children to Norco High School. And, um, as for the dirt, the dirt isn't contaminated at all. Again, it's just the vapors coming out, moving through the very small pore spaces in the dirt, and leading to this inhalation problem when the vapors can get trapped in indoor air as they come out of the ground into a building. And then they don't mix with the outdoor air very quickly. When it goes into the general atmosphere, it mixes fast, and then the sunlight breaks it down. It's, it's at incredibly low levels, and below any level of concern. It's when it gets trapped in the indoor air is where we have the potential issues, where it may be above a limit, that we decided is, you know, below this limit is safe, above it, it may not be safe for some sensitive individual. So that's why we focus on levels that are above those limits inside indoor air.
Thank you. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Just from this last slide, um, so the areas that are in kind of the orange and yellow in the lower basin, if buildings were to be built there, would they require any sort of indoor vapor mitigation measures?
Well, right now, I don't think there's any requirements tied to, to that for those areas. For the blue areas, I think if they were to suddenly start building, they would have to have those vapor mitigation. What, just for, one is because it's actually required in those land use covenants. It's something that's built into it. But another is that anyone who would, if, if you were a responsible developer, even if you didn't have those requirements from DTFC and the land use covenant, you would, you would definitely be making a bad mistake to not require it in those blue areas. Because the concentrations are still a significant issue in the blue areas. That's what the remedy is meant, to reduce those concentrations over time and get them down to levels which may be safe. But in the end, the requirement may be there for, permanently, to require mitigation in those blue areas. We don't know yet at this time. And it's, and it's a requirement in the LUC. In the orange and yellow areas, I don't believe that there are any vapor issues in those areas, but, um-
How would we confirm that? So for instance, if a developer comes in and they want to propose what they want to build there, and we want to make sure that what they build is safe for people to inhabit?
You know, the, the way to confirm that would be to install soil vapor probes in those areas to understand, you know, if there's any concentration in soil vapor. Based on the, you know, the soil vapor plumes are co-located with the impacted groundwater. So, you know, the areas where the groundwater remediation is ongoing are more or less outlined in the blue. So we know that those areas definitely have, you know, groundwater impacts as well as likely soil vapor impacts. We don't have soil vapor probes, um, across all of these areas, because there's no buildings on the surface where we were moved. So, um, but, but in the other areas, I, I think we, most of those areas, we don't have any evidence that there's any impacts. But your question was, how do we know for sure? And that would be install soil vapor probes and evaluate the presence of VOCs, soil vapor.
Okay, thank you.
Can I tag team off that just a second? So somebody could build a building, and suddenly they find out they have a problem?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
In other words, somebody builds a building in the safe areas, and all of a sudden, somebody does a soils test, because now there's a building to capture vapors, they could have a problem?
Well, I think, I think the other question was related, how do we know for sure? So, you know, oftentimes in, um, land development, they would go out and do a proactive soil vapor survey in order to assess that before constructing the building, so that could be incorporated into the design if necessary.
Thank you.
Just a couple of questions, and I'm probably going to oversimplify this. Uh, just my impression seems like we're chasing a plume, right? Down through Norco High School and Temescal Avenue. The remediations that are taking place at, um, Third and Hillside and on the side, is the intention that that would pull that plume back to the site? Or are you just waiting for that plume to dissipate somewhere? Are we constantly going to be chasing that plume? Trying to understand the nature of the off-site plume? And is that going to ever be mitigated, or it's just going to stay there?
Currently, there's no active remedy for the off-site plume beyond that zero-bail-and-iron transect. So, um, you know, we're still in the process of assessing that. So we are working with Arrow's consultant, you know, to proactively install, um, additional monitoring points and understand, you know, the, the trends and the contaminants down there, and understand if any additional steps are required.
So, to simplify, yes, you're still chasing the plume, and no, we don't know what we would do with it yet? Because we're still gathering data on the off-site plume, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then when we're talking about levels in classrooms or at the high school in general, is that the interpretation of someone being on that site for four years as a student? Is that the interpretation of somebody having an extended career on that site? What's like the threshold for amount of time that you're kind of giving your window of acceptable levels?
Well, we, we, I don't know that we ever came up with a specific acceptable level for a school, but the way we general, for this, for Norco High School, but the way we do it, if we found vapors to be of an issue, would be based upon the teacher who's there their entire career. A student is only there for four years, and we look at potential short-term health risks, which could be an issue for the TCE also. But in general, it's based upon the, the teacher who's spending, spending their career at the school.
Okay. Um, I don't think I have any other questions at this time. So thank you for your, um, presentation. And then just as a point of information, like Ag Two is used probably six days a week and inhabited with students and staff, so, um, yeah. So I hope that, you know, when we're doing our research, that we're kind of coordinating a little bit better with seeing USD staff and collecting data, data and information on that particular point. And, um, just doing a better job of maybe collaborating and getting that information and getting access and understanding the nature of, you know, the activities and what's going on at the high school, and as it relates to this particular project and issue. So, anything else? All right, thank you for coming in. We appreciate it. And I'm hoping that, you know, as you guys collect data every three or five years, or whatever that is, that we can get more regular reports until, you know, all the remediation's done. That's clearly going to be to reports to councils beyond our tenure, right? But I just think being proactive and providing those reports regularly will be helpful for our community as well. So, thank you.
The last thing I wanted to add is, uh, as we review those reports, remedial performance monitoring reports on five-year reviews, once we finalize them, they are available for public review. And I can say that the latest one, uh, the remedial performance monitoring reports that were finalized are the 2021 reports. They are available and accessible for everyone. If you, if you check the DTSC and V, DTSC and Virus store webpage, you have access to them. And, and what I was doing for, with previous city manager, I, whenever we wanted to do some, like, especially these grab groundwater sampling activity, I was sending him update letters that, at this time, we are planning. Maybe this is what we are discussing with, uh, Arrow Consult, and, and we are planning to do this. Uh, I, I believe I informed him about this grab groundwater sampling activity at the, in the off-site area. And then, because we knew that people would see that, and they might have a question about what's going on. So we tried to be more proactive on that. And going forward, we definitely, I mean, once we get any report and have a chance to review it and finalize it, we definitely share it with the public.
I think one of the issues we, we talked about last time is- I think one of the issues we talked about last time is trying to find them on the website. So I just went there right now. And when I type in the search bar Wiley, just kind of random things come up, like fact sheet, not necessarily the newest report. When I go to Envirostar, where would I, what specific tab would I click on to find those reports?
I can work with Vincent and talk him through the process of how to find those reports in the DTSC website.
So on our website, it's actually under the Resources tab, under Wiley Site Cleanup, and it links directly to the Envirostore.
But to where the reports are on Envirostore?
Oh.
Yeah, that would be most helpful, just so that...
Yeah, I can coordinate.
Yeah, because for the average citizen, to be able to get on here and find the information, it's not as straightforward possibly. So that would be helpful. Thank you.
All right, thank you. At this time, we're going to go ahead and adjourn to a special meeting, closed session. So Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment on that?
I have no public comments for the special meeting.
Okay, so we'll have our city attorney announce our item.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a closed session, an audio conference with real property negotiators.
All right, thank you. So we will adjourn to closed session at this time.
And reconvene our public session, we'll have a report of items from closed session from our city attorney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Council went into closed session and heard two of the potential litigation cases. There was no reportable action on either of those. The remaining items, including one additional potential anticipated litigation, were continued until the end of the meeting.
Thank you very much. So, we will be having the Pledge of Allegiance by Mayor Pro Tem Bash, and then our invocation this evening will be from Pastor Michelle. So, we'll go ahead. Oh, and Joan Jacobs from Congregation Beth Shalom. So, we'll start with the pledge. So, if you'll please remain standing for our invocations.
What an honor, what a joy, what a blessing. This is my new friend, Joan, and we're going to, you're gonna get doubly blessed tonight, right? And so, I want to start with one of my favorite Psalms, and something that I've been praying for you, and we have, I have personally watched God work miracles and wonderful things. Hear these words and pray with me. May the Lord answer you in the day of trouble. May the name of the God of Jacob defend you. May he send you help from the sanctuary and strengthen you out of Zion. May he remember all your offerings and accept your burnt sacrifice. May he grant you according to your heart's desire and fulfill all your purpose. We will rejoice in your salvation, and in the name of our God, we will set up our banners. May the Lord fulfill all your petitions. Loving and sovereign God, we humbly come together tonight to ask you to be present at tonight's city council meeting. You are the God who hears us, the God who sees us, the God who leads, protects, and provides. Tonight, united together, we also pray for Israel, for your people. United, we ask you to strengthen and guide and protect them. We seek your favor and your blessings for your people, Lord. Lord, I thank you for a city council that will stand against evil. We pray that you will lead and guide this meeting and the city. May the words spoken here tonight and the thoughts expressed be for the good of all. God bless Israel. God bless Horsedown, USA, and may God bless the United States of America. We pray this in your holy name. Amen.
Source of life, our Father, our Mother in Heaven, we live in unprecedented time. Our souls are hurting. We cry for our brothers and sisters who endure war, poverty, hunger, and hate. We pray for Israel, both the mystic ideal of our ancestors' dreams and the living miracle here and now. Built of heart, muscle, and steel, made this little country so great, endure, surviving the relentless age-old hate and the rumblings that have become war. May Israel continue to embrace her homeless and bind, being gathered firmly into one people. May we always dare to hope, which is tikva in Hebrew, that in our day, the tragic isolation will end, and that all the displaced Arab and Jew will be rooted again, that Israel and her neighbors will touch hands in peace. May our leaders and advisors here in this room and abroad be guided by your light, your truth, and your good counsel. Strengthen their hands as they defend our cities, our counties, and our countries. Deliver them and crown their efforts with triumph. Bless these lands with peace and its inhabitants with everlasting joy. Barok haTadonai, Eloheinu Melech HaLam, Sheheke Yehanu, TeKiyah Manu, TeHig Yehanu, Las Man Hasel. Source of life, Creator of peace and harmony, thank you for allowing us to reach this time in our lives. Everything we do is for your glory and your name. And let us all say together, amen.
Thank you both for being here and sharing those blessings this evening. We have two proclamations for the month of November. We are going to be starting with our Veterans and Military Families Month. So, we will be presenting proclamation to members of our community. So, for this, I'd like to call up David and Pat Overstreet and Norva Williams. If you guys will come up to the front. And, yes. So, if you guys will come stand right behind me. All right. In 1993, the Armed Services YMCA established Military Family Month, which is now called National Veterans and Military Families Month, as a way to recognize the strength and sacrifices of the families, caregivers, and survivors of our veterans and our current service members. And whereas National Veterans and Military Families Month pays homage to the unrelenting bravery and dedication of all who wear the uniform, and to the unwavering love and support of all those who serve alongside.
Whereas, the City of Norco created the George A. Ingalls Veterans Memorial Plaza and the adjoining Gold Star Families Memorial Monument as a place of permanence for our veterans and military families to gather and experience the support and gratitude of their community. And whereas, the City of Norco is a patriotic community that is committed to recognizing our past and present military service members, while also recognizing the significant contributions, support, and sacrifices of our military families. Now, therefore, I, Robin Grunmeyer, Mayor of the City of Norco, on behalf of our city council, do hereby proclaim November 2023 as a National Veterans and Military Families Month in the City of Norco, where all citizens, past, present,
where all citizens, past, present, and future, are respected and recognized for their contributions to our community. And we have all these lovely people here to speak, so would you like to start? Not really. You're like, no? All right. So, I know Norva has a few words prepared.
First and most importantly, I would like to thank our council for recognizing our military families. In my day, the bureaucracy considered us necessary evils. Common consensus was, and my military grandson informed me today still is, if the military wanted you to have a wife, they would have issued you one. Am I right, guys? The trials and tribulations that the families had to endure were above and beyond belief. My kids state that we moved 38 times in the 15 years that we were an active-duty family. I never counted. They did. Today's military families are much better recognized and have much better services and support offered to them. Handling a batch of kids when the active-duty mom or dad is employed is still a struggle. If any of you have an active-duty military family member, please be there for them. Again, thank you to our council for recognizing our often forgotten families.
Well, I'd like to thank the city. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Greg Newton, for nominating us for this again. You know, when you retire from the military, you sort of leave the institutional military. You leave the base. You don't shop at the PX anymore, and with Costco, who cares anyway? But one of the neatest things in coming to Norco 45 years ago is we moved to a more patriotic city than the actual bases were that we were ever assigned to. I don't remember a base ever having a red, white, and blue stripe down the main street. I don't remember so many flags flying on our houses. It's just been a joy to live in a city that is so pro-military, pro-family, pro-God, and pro-patriotism. And as we speak tonight, our military family is growing even more. Our 19-year-old Lance Corporal grandson is on his way home from Japan. He will arrive tomorrow. We'll be going to two Marine Corps birthday balls with him, and his papa couldn't be any prouder. So, our military family has extended, and we thank you all for being just so loving and patriotic as you are. Thank you.
All right. For our next proclamation, if I could have Sean Gill and David Bell come up, please. Mr. Bell, you're coming up too. Whereas, in 1990, President George H.W. Bush designated the month of November as Native American Heritage Month. And whereas, Native American Heritage Month is recognized to celebrate the rich and diverse cultures, traditions, and histories of indigenous people, and acknowledge the significant contributions the first Americans made to the establishment and growth of the United States. And whereas, Native American Heritage Month is also an opportune time to educate the general public about tribes, to raise general awareness about the unique challenges Native people have faced both historically and in the present, and to promote the ways in which tribal citizens have worked to conquer those challenges. And whereas, the city of Norco recognizes its local Native American history and reflects on the strides we have made to ensure all citizens feel accepted and included. And whereas, the city of Norco is a diverse community that is honored to celebrate the history and legacies of Native American community members who have contributed to the economic, cultural, spiritual, and political development of our city, state, and country. Now, therefore, I, Robin Grunmeyer, Mayor of the City of Norco, on behalf of our city council, do hereby proclaim November 2023 as Native American Heritage Month in the city of Norco, where all citizens, past, present, and future, are respected and recognized for their contributions to our community.
I got to Norco about 16 years ago. I didn't know much about what I've, I really have enjoyed working in the community. And it just gives me another positive thing to tell people about the city and the community here in Norco.
I just want to say thank you to Honorable Mayor and city council members for recognizing this month as Native American Heritage Month. I'm a member of the Seneca Cayuga Tribe out of Oklahoma. We originated in New York, but when the European settlers came to the U.S., we got kicked out, and the rest is history. So, just want to say thank you to everyone. Thank you.
All right. We are gonna go ahead and go into our city council reports on regional boards, and we're gonna start with Mayor Pro Tem Bash.
I have nothing to report, but I just want to remind everybody that on Sunday at 10 o'clock, we will unveil the, or dedicate the Kathy Azavito Spirit of Norco. I don't know. It's not a memorial. What are we calling it, Amanda? Monument. And what it'll be is it'll be a place where we can honor people that have contributed to Norco in the spirit of Kathy Azavito. And then, we have Veterans Day coming up. It looks like Karen Spiegel is our guest speaker, along with Gunnery Sergeant, which I think you will enjoy. He's promised to keep his shoes on. And then, December 7th, we are going to be having that event also at the memorial. And the high school is bringing 200 students plus 11 teachers. And our speaker is going to be Jeff Anderson, who does the service dogs. And so, I'm really excited about that, and I think that should be a good event. So, I hope to see you all there.
All right. Councilmember Alaman.
Yeah. So, October 19th, I attended the Northwest Mosquito Vector and Control District Board of Trustees meeting, and some photos of Norco made it into one of our staff reports, which are shown. So, these are a couple of sites around Norco that were growing mosquitoes. So, just want to remind everyone to make sure that any standing water is removed. If you see standing water, for instance, one of these is a utility box. You can give a call. Our property taxes pay for Northwest Mosquito Vector and Control District services. But the mosquitoes are still out and about. With all of the rain, we've had so many, so many. So, I was getting bit yesterday on the ankles. So, that's it.
Councilmember Hannah.
Thank you, Mayor. As you notice there on the RCTC, there's several connector closures up. Mostly tonight will be the end of them, but there'll be a new list on the website. Main thing is, the main reason is because of the connector up here. The 9150 northbound is getting close to being completed, and they're working hard to get it. I don't know when the opening will be, but I'll let you know. And then with RTA, I have more than what's on this list. Let me find my list. Ridership continues to rise, and the coach operator recruitment is improving in training. But on October the 6th, RTA achieved a post-pandemic one-day ridership record of 22,853 trips. That was a record since COVID. The free rides on Fridays go through June 28th, 2024. And the shuttle for soldiers, I talked about it a little bit at the last meeting, and they're over here on Beacon Hill, their office. When they began operations on October the 2nd, it serves the veteran community by providing modified transportation for those that need it most to medical, for medical reasons. And flyers and our presentations were provided to all the chapters. So, that's a good deal. We need to, if you know any veterans, let them know about that program. It'll help them get to the hospital and their doctors and everything. So, that's all I have, ma'am.
Councilmember Newton.
Thank you, Mayor. Monday, this subcommittee met out at Ingalls Park for the Spirit of Norco Kathy Azavito Monument. And as Kevin said, that Sunday's the dedication, and we may be done with it. We'll just see how it goes. I have a lot of faith in Amanda, so you're all welcome. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. So, on October 24th, the city manager, myself, and the mayor Pro Tem did go to the Riverside City Council member to give public, or council meeting, to give public comment regarding their item on the agenda of the RTRP. So, we did end up with a favorable vote on that particular item, and so, that was time well spent. And then, just wanted to mention to staff and our public safety and law enforcement folks, thank you for a great event. The turnout was just off the charts, and the new layout and having it in the arena, I think, just worked fabulously. So, just wanted to thank staff for all their work on that event, and that will conclude my report. So, we are going to move on to item number two, our consent calendar. Councilmembers, are there any items that need to be pulled at this time? 2H. Any other items? All right. Are there any public comment cards?
I have no public comment cards for the consent calendar.
I will entertain a motion for a consent.
Move to approve.
Please vote.
I'm a yes. I did too. I'm gonna sign out.
Mayor Grunmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Bash? Councilmember Alaman?
Yes.
And motion passes unanimous, as you see on the screen.
All right. Thank you very much. Item number three are those items that were pulled from the consent. Councilmember Alaman.
Yes. So, I had a couple of questions and then just a comment. So, my question, I think, Lissa, you'll answer. So, I sent some questions earlier about this item. But when we're talking about the water and the sewer fund, and the staff reported, went in some detail about how much was left last year, the surplus, and then how much is, needs to be reserved for operating expenses versus capital projects. And so, I just wanted to get kind of a more clear breakdown of what is in both of those funds and what is available for capital improvement versus rate stabilization versus O&M, or not O&M, but operating reserves.
Yeah. So, as part of our year-end, we do a calculation from our water and sewer funds, operating funds, to determine based on their balance sheet, what is available to transfer over to our CIP fund for water and sewer. So, we take the balance sheet and determine what our working capital is. So, basically, our assets minus our current liabilities to determine, okay, this is what we have. We also set aside the operating reserve, so that's about three months' worth of expenditures to sort of set aside in case of, you know, for anything that might come up. And then, as part of our rate stabilization, we also set that aside. And I believe that we set aside, we've been setting aside about $200,000 each year for five years to come up with $2 million. Currently, I think it's 1.3 million. So, what's left over is what we transferred to CIP.
And what is in the CIP? Is that the current assets?
No. The water CIP budget. So, that's, we give it, we transfer it for capital improvement project.
Okay. I'm trying to see what the number is that we have available for water CIP.
I would have to get to that. It's just our, it's our.
So, when it says in the staff report, there's 1.3 million available this year for transfer?
Yes.
But there are some additional funds that are already in that fund?
Yes. So, when we do our CIP budget, we estimate how much we're gonna transfer. So, and at that time, we look at the balance sheet, do the same calculation. It's just done before year-end. And then, when we do the CIP, we estimate that number. So, when we approve the, when council approves that CIP, it has an estimate of what we're transferring into that fund. And then, at year-end, we do the same calculation, but based on actual numbers now is what we transfer.
Okay. Because I know we went over this when we were looking at the rates, the rate study, possible rate study. But because now we have our actual numbers, I just wanted to see where we were at in terms of what we discussed.
Mayor, we can provide you with that information as a follow-up.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Lissa. And then, my other comment, that just because we've talked about the budget, and I know we're working to kind of true up our budget, that our budget last year, we had a surplus of 4.1 million, but 3.4 million of that came from ARPA. So, even removing those extra ARPA funds, we still would have finished out the year roughly 0.7 million in the black. So. And with that, I'll make a motion to approve. Thank you.
Second. Please vote. You were in the wrong meeting. Councilmember Alaman, you vote. Councilmember Bash? And the motion passes unanimous as on the board?
All right. Thank you. Item number four is our public comment, so I'll go ahead and call upon the city clerk for public comment.
This is the time when persons wishing to address the presiding governmental body regarding matters not on the agenda may be heard. Please limit comments to three minutes or less. The governmental bodies shall not discuss or act relative to any general public comment. Our first speaker is Joy Olaya.
I had seen an article online and came across something that was actually pretty cool, and I think is befitting of how Norco is with all of our military families and our veterans. And I had sent a text to Kevin, and he liked the idea too, and I told him I was just going to come here today and present it all to you. And essentially, what it is, is I can't remember the name of the city that had done it, but they had taken their overpass, which I had thought we could do maybe the Sixth Street overpass, painted it white with, you know, kind of flags on the side, and it said, "All gave some, some gave all." And it just kind of was very fitting for our town, I thought, and it's just kind of odd the way the universe works, and I'm here today when you all are honoring our military families. Speaking on that, I just thank you for doing that. My youngest son just got back from the Middle East, and it is very scary over there right now, so supporting your military families is such a nice thing for you to do. So if you know a military family, give them a little extra. It's a little rough right now, so, but I'll leave this with you.
Oh, perfect, thank you. Yeah, the city clerk will take it from you. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
Our next speaker is Terry McCloskey.
Good evening. I just wanted to bring up a couple of things that came to mind. One is, and I don't know if it can be helpful or not, but the stoplights, when we have, we close the roads down for our parade or whatever, when they set them back up, they're not coincided with each other, and it is just a mix of bad, bad traffic jam. It's really bad. So one light will be green, and you go through, and then the next one's red, you can't go, and it stops the people coming through the green, and then the next one turns green, and then that one's red. And so I don't know if there's any way to have somebody synchronize the lights after they've been turned off a little bit better than what they've been. So that was a concern that's been since long as I've lived here. Okay, and then the next one would be, this is a tough one. When they redid Hillside, I'm on the west side of the street, and that was where the trail is, and the fire hydrants were there. When they redid it between Sixth and Fifth Street, they put the fire hydrants on the east side, which is where you park. So for 18 years, I parked my horse trailer and my truck there when I'm loading or unloading, or the neighbor, even though I have the right to, the neighbor, I would always ask, and I was able to stay overnight if I had a friend or something, or I was going somewhere. They put the fire hydrant right where the truck and trailer goes, there's no place to park. And this is Horstown, USA, and I have no place to park my horse and trailer, my truck and trailer. And so I, and when I brought it to the attention, when I found out that the fire hydrant came up, they said, "Well, once it's up, we can't do anything about it." Well, I didn't know it was up until they put it up, because they're digging holes everywhere. So I would like to see if there's any way of possibly putting the fire hydrants where they were on the, on the west side, which is, you got the trail, and then you have, what do you call it, the easement where the, where the trees are? That, nobody can park there anyway, and that would be where a perfect place for a fire hydrant, it's on the side of the curb. So I'll help you do it, do the work, I'm pretty handy, and I'll be happy to help, but it's really hard, because people pick me up to go riding, and they park there, and it's like, if you get out of your vehicle or turn your engine off, you can get a ticket. I think I'd fight it, so I just wanted to present that. I don't know if there's any way to change it, but I will help. Chad knows I'll help. Right, Chad? You know that. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you. Our last speaker, Mayor, is Sergeant Eckoff.
Mayor, council, staff, I just wanted to thank the city, and I might, I might choke up a little bit here, I'll try not to. I just want to thank the city of Norco for standing behind the veterans in all of our events. We had an event not too long ago, the car show, seems like a simple thing, but we showed, my fellow commissioners and I showed for the first time 30 more people that had never been to the memorial and gave them a tour. And everybody else, everybody that goes up there and has a tour is just blown away. And I can't say enough about the people that stand behind it, the show, all the staff that help us put on these events, and they do it with such a smile on their face. And I just want to tell you, there's, there's not many cities that do this, and I just wanted to thank you guys. We got some of the founding members of the memorial sitting right here in front of me that put this thing together. And we're trying our best to continue the tradition and to honor that memorial. You've given us a big job to do, and we hope we're up to it. But I just wanted to thank all of them. Thank you.
I have no further comment, Mayor.
All right, moving on to item number five. Does council have any questions or concerns on item 5A, which is our ordinance second reading? All right, is there any public comment on this item?
I have no public comment.
Well, then I will entertain a motion regarding item number five.
Please vote. Thank you all. Motion passes unanimous.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, I don't want to jinx us, but I think we're close enough. Item number six, city council and staff communication. So city staff, anything from over here? All right, Alma. Okay, so for those of you watching at home, November 16th, Alma wants you to come to the bar in between 4:00 and 7:00 to give your comments on the general plan. Comments on the general plan. You are welcome. Any other city staff? City attorney? City manager? Berwin?
Couple items. Got a question for Chad. How often does streets week is run on Sixth Street?
They're supposed to be weekly.
Because I've had two complaints this week about, and it's not the first time, but the dust, the dirt that's built up on the curb from Sixth Street, now it's got the leaves tacked in there with it, and they just want to know when that would happen.
Yeah, it's scheduled should be weekly, and then it's monthly on residential property.
Okay, but I couldn't remember how often it was. Another thing, and this is a feel-good moment, take a second to talk about it, it's always good to have a feel-good moment. Last Friday, Melvin from Animal Control called me at 5:00 AM about a horse that fell down in a newly dug septic tank over in Terupa Valley. Now, some of you will remember about five or six years ago, we were able to finally get a MOU with Riverside County Animal Services. It took us seven years when we started working on that, but when Karen Spiegel got elected, well, I brought her over, and she met with all of us, and the fire chiefs and city manager and everybody, and we had a MOU within a couple of months, where we trained those guys. And there's a lot of them in that department over there. We trained them, if they need us over there, they call us, if we need them, we call them, we go anywhere in the county, we've got extra help with Riverside County Animal Services plus Cal Fire, and we appreciate that, Chief. So we get this call, there was four of us from NART, plus Melvin and Cecia. We go over, and I'm a little worried, you know, because nothing's ever easy with a horse rescue, especially in a backyard. Well, we drive up there, turn the corner, two Cal Fire engines, a Cal Fire search and rescue, so there was about 12 extra helpers there, plus 10 people from Riverside County Animal Services, two code enforcement officers, and at least six deputies, and a county vet. We always have to work with a vet and somebody with a badge, like a fireman, a sheriff or something, because some people get a little funky about their animals when you're messing with them, so you need a badge there to keep peace. Well, it turns out, this was in the backyard up against the fence in the house, 25 feet deep, this horse is down in there. All kinds of stuff sitting around, plus a mound of dirt that we had to deal with. And then, of all things, it's 5:30 in the morning, here's an open septic tank right there by it. So, because like I said, nothing's ever pleasant. So we looked at it, and I went back out front with a couple of the Riverside guys, and we were explaining to some of the new people there, the Cal Fires and them, about our equipment and what we was going to set up and try to do to get this horse out. And luckily, it went pretty good for everybody, except, except the horse, they euthanized him down in the hole because he had broke a leg going down in a 25-foot deal. But I'm saying, it was such a nice scene when we turned that corner and seen all that extra help there. Chief, Captain, you can pass it on to your people, I really appreciate all that. And we were loading up to get out of there, and somebody said, "Why is all those deaf and sheriff's so weird?" I said, "Have you looked at this neighborhood?" And I meant it, you don't know what you're going to run into with people when they're, and their animals. I think they'd come there shooting you over an animal than they would one of their kids. But I just wanted to pass that on, that was good. And Chief, if you pass this on to any of your engines, we're going to train, we train one Tuesday night a month. If you gets, we've had some of your engines before. If any of them have spare time, they want to come up and train with us, we appreciate it. Because everywhere we go in the county, we always have a Cal Fire truck show up, and animal control people, and there's about 15 of those animal control people show up to train with us every time, so it's a blessing that we got that MOU and everything. But that was my feel-good moment, except for the poor horse, but we were determined we were going to get him out. We have the, we have the equipment and the training to do it, and thank God he was in a dry hole. That's all I have, Mayor.
Councilmember Newton?
I can't top that, so thank you all for coming out this evening.
Councilmember Alman?
Just want to second the comments to our first responders and the sheriff for sponsoring the trunk or treat, and all of our city staff who worked so hard. In the last three years, that event has not even quadrupled, I mean, it's just grown and grown and grown, and we keep finding a bigger and better place, and more and more people keep coming. Last year, you know, I waited in line for an hour this year, thanks to Mayor Grandmayr brought a trunk for us and decorations, so we got to pass out candy as a city council. But folks were out there lined up half an hour or more before the event even started. I think there were over 2,000 people, so just big kudos that we had such a successful event, and everyone had so much fun. And then mañana is El Dia de los Muertos, a las seis, a las ocho. So tomorrow's Day of the Dead, from 6:00 to 8:00, we're going to have Dos Bandas de Mariachis, we're going to have some mariachi bands and some other students who are doing folklorico, so invite everyone to come on out. There's also going to be an altar to place photos of your past loved ones, or last year we had a pet altar as well, so everyone's invited to come out and participate.
Well, I can't think of a better night to ask to agendize something. What Joy brought up, I, I'd like to investigate that, "All gave some, some gave all." I'd like to look to see what that would take. I know that Caltrans would probably have to be involved, but I would like to agendize looking at putting that on one of our overpasses. I always wanted to put Norco, but truth is, everybody knows what Norco is. But the reality is, is what Norco is, and I think this sign would be fantastic. So I would like to agendize this at the next or the meeting after, and at least look at it to see what it would cost.
Okay.
Please vote.
I thought we were done.
Mayor Grumeyer? I had hers on.
Yeah, I didn't turn mine off, Madam City Clerk.
Mayor Pro Tem Bash?
Yes.
Councilmember Hannah? And Councilmember Newton? Motion passes unanimous. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem, anything else? All right, ladies and gentlemen, we are going to finish off our regular session. Council needs to go back into closed session. So you don't need to wait, I mean, there might be leftover sandwiches when we're done, but not likely, so please do not feel obligated to stay here and wait for us to get out. Our city attorney is going to read off the items, we're going to go back and to closed session over.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Closed session on investigative litigation, one potential case, conference with labor negotiators, conference with real property negotiators, and public employee performance evaluation.
All right, perfect, thank you to those Norco High School kids. This is the meeting to be at, so you guys can put your papers on the chair. Thank you, everybody, for coming this evening.